Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, May 23. If you are watching live either on TV or via Zoom, we engage are happy to engage your comments at the moments when we open the floor to any speakers. As always, you can pick up our meetings at PCTV76.org. Within a few days, an on-demand webcast of this meeting as well as previous meetings. And we also publish the Zoom links for these meetings at Pleasantville-NY.gov. You'll see here in a moment that we have a public hearing that will open and close quickly on the subject of virtual meetings, which the state has passed legislation that requires us to enable this to continue. But it's certainly our thought that we will continue to operate in this virtual manner or hybrid manner with the board members here in the room. Although in some circumstances, board members who are not able to attend can also participate via Zoom, but offering the opportunity for members of the community to come here at 80 Wheeler Avenue or to listen and/or participate via Zoom. So our gizmo that sits there on the front of the table, the owl, I think, is serving us pretty well, and we're getting a little bit better at it as we go. So happy to think that it creates more opportunities for people to participate. So our next regular meeting is on Monday, June 13. Work session at 7, regular meeting at 8. I had a couple of announcements to make, and then we'll get to the two public hearings, the latter of which I think is the subject of greater interest for a lot of our attendees. But I did want to make a few announcements upfront, and one of them, as perhaps you already know, COVID, the COVID situation is substantially better than it was in many months past from the standpoint of hospitalization. It is definitely tracking in the wrong direction in terms of the number of new positives and the number of active cases we have in Pleasantville. We get the numbers from the state system. There obviously is very significant undercount because folks who test at home never end up counted. But to the extent that the state system is in indication of what's going on, I can report, just for example, today, we got a report of 13 new positives. That would have covered the weekend. Total of 98 active cases in the Village of Pleasantville right now. So thus far, up to yesterday, May 22, we've had 128 cases in May in the entire month that preceded it. In April, we had 88 cases. In the entire month of March, we had 49. So assuming the trend in May continues, it looks like we're roughly double where we were in April and a little more than triple where we were in March. So bottom line there is a whole lot of people still having to deal with this and ending up out of school, out of the workforce, whatever. So I encourage everybody to keep that in mind as they go about their lives. Couple of things to report. One is I had the good fortune to attend the annual inspection and dinner that followed at the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department. It's an annual event that hasn't been possible in a couple of recent years, but the folks at the fire department polish everything up to an even greater shine than it normally is, which is pretty impressive all by itself. And many other departments come as well as local officials. The volunteer fire department does an amazing job for us. The trucks and equipment put my own car trunk to shame. And I was just glad to participate and thank those good people for all of the amazing service they provide. Chief Madison Martino, Assistant Chief Asterios Capino, the Chair of Board of Fire Commissioners, Mike Raffino, and all of the other officers and members of the fire department. So thank you, Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department, and a good opportunity to have a really fun night, but also to say thank you to our fire department is Friday, June 3 at 7:00 p.m. The fire department parade is back. So we hope the entire community shows up for what is always a great event and which we haven't had an opportunity to have. So that's Friday, June 3. Today is Monday, the 23rd. A week from today is May 30th, Memorial Day. We will be able to have our normal Memorial Day services, beginning up at BRS at the World War I Monument at 10:00 a.m., a parade down Bedford Road, arriving at Memorial Plaza where the ceremonies continue. So I encourage everybody who's able to come and participate in that. We are planning, as we do every year, to have the high school band, high school vocalists, speakers from the Fancher Nickel American Legion post, and the annual roll call of those from Pleasantville who perished in war. So Monday, May 30, 10:00 a.m. at BRS, roughly 10:30 by the time we get down here. And then in the category of looking ahead, Saturday, July 9, is the 16th Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com is where you can read all about it. There is an economic incentive to get your tickets early, which you can do online or at the rec center. So please take a look at that and join if you are able. I'm happy to report, we heard today that the vendor village is essentially sold out. There's been a whole lot of interest in that. The lineup of the bands has been posted. And once again, I just want to say thank you to the folks at Northwell Health who operate both Phelps Hospital in Saratoga and Northern Westchester in Mount Kisco. They have become our lead sponsor. So it is the Pleasantville Music Festival presented by Northwell Health. Thank you, Northwell. Thank you, Phelps. Thank you, Northern Westchester. Really, I think, a great, great, great partnership. So I had a couple of other announcements to make that I can hold for later. Since folks are here, I know about the discussion about leaf blowers. But where we are going to start with what I promise will be a very short public hearing is there a motion to open a public hearing on introductory local law number four of 2022 to allow members of all public bodies of the Village of Pleasantville to participate in meetings via teleconference?
Video conference, sorry.
Tele, yeah, video, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm living in the past. So.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eric, you want to just quickly describe this?
Sure. So this is a part of the state budget that allows municipalities to operate their boards via video conference. Quorum must still be present in person, but board members could participate remotely. Previously, they could do so, but had to notice where they were and allow that space to actually be open to the public. Now, just caveat here, as long as there is a state of emergency in the state of New York, boards can operate via video conference without being in person. And that was just extended another 30 days. So the state can only extend that state of emergency by 30 days. So it was extended until June 15. So we do have boards that are still fully remote. But once that is dropped, this local law needs to be in place to enable us to do the video conference as it's described.
All right. Any comments from any of us? Pretty straightforward, and I think a benefit to everybody to allow this. Comments of any sort from any member of the public? Anybody watching on Zoom? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have done what the state insisted we do. Is there a motion to open the continuation of the public hearing concerning introductory local law three of 2022 concerning seasonal limitations on fuel-powered motorized leaf blowers?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So we're picking up where we left off. A continuation of the public hearing that we began at our last meeting. Lots of comment was received at that meeting, and we have received quite a bit of comment since. Everybody who sent an email has, their email has been incorporated into the record and circulated to everybody on the board. And I think the tenor of the comment we've gotten in the couple of weeks since the last hearing is not very much different from the sense you might have gotten if you watched or attended the previous one, which is that there are a whole lot of folks who go very strongly on the subject on both sides. So we have had a discussion in work session about ways in which we might modify this, especially in response to comments we've just received from the public. And Nicole can go through the discussion and where we are thinking at the moment.
Sure. So, you know, we all kind of digested the comments from the first public hearing. I see a number of familiar faces from last time. So a couple of themes that emerged during the public hearing. One was a desire for a level playing field. People in favor of the law, people opposing it, as well as some who seemed open to it but had some reservations, expressed a strong disagreement with the exemption for the golf course in particular. The other concern was the sense that some landscape companies would have difficulty making the necessary adjustments on the proposed timescale. At the same time, we heard from a lot of people who expressed their frustration with the continuous presence of leaf blowers. The biggest complaint that we heard over and over again was about the noise generated by leaf blowers. So taking all these things into consideration, and as Peter said, the fact that there is definitely a divided community on this, we are proposing some changes. One is that though we would vote on the law in the near future, we would amend the law so that it would go into effect in May of 2023, so a year from now. This would allow everyone a full year to prepare for the implementation of the law, thus creating more of an evil, of an even playing field, allowing everybody the time to sort of prepare both in terms of equipment and in terms of practices and so on. And it would also allow us, the village, to have an information campaign so that we would have plenty of time to get the word out, to let people know what was happening. Secondly, we would remove the exemption for the golf course. The exemption that we had in place was, in fact, had a sunset clause of two years. So this would effectively shorten the sunset by a year and sort of also give that sunset, as it were, to the rest of the community for a year as well. So it would be the same for everyone. We've been in conversation with the school district. They requested a turf, an exemption for the turf fields in periods of heavy rain. So it's a, it's a unique circumstance. The turf fields are comprised of organic material of cork and coconut husk. So when it rains very heavily, those materials rise to the surface, and they use leaf blowers to blow that material down. So we feel that that being a very limited exemption, it's reasonable to keep that one in. I will add that we've also been in conversation with the school district about sharing best practices on our side because, from the village point of view, we are working on transitioning to electric across the board. And then, given that those who, oh, well, I'll say that later, sorry. Given that those who are clamoring for some kind of relief from the leaf blower noise and who have been doing so for many years now would have to wait for an additional year. And in addition to address a complaint that we have heard repeatedly about the lack of quiet hours on the weekend. So I have said to my colleagues, and some of my colleagues have had similar experiences, I've had people come to me and say, you know, I really would like to have a barbecue on a Saturday evening, or I would like to have friends over for dinner, and I can't do that because I never know just how loud it's going to be outside. So an additional proposal is to amend the hours during which landscaping equipment is permitted on the weekend. Currently, it's from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So we're proposing adding an additional two hours at the end of the day. So it would still start at 9:00 a.m., and it would finish at 5:00 p.m. And then I just, this isn't about the law per se, but I just wanted to add that we've also been doing some research into additional ways in which we can help landscape companies because that was one of the voices that we heard from last time. And I think we mentioned that we have currently a rebate program for homeowners who want to turn in a gas-powered leaf blower or a lawnmower and switch to electric. We, it looks like we're likely to receive more grant money, potentially a $10,000 grant. And so we're looking into the possibility of using that to help out landscapers as well, in addition to having some educational opportunities throughout the year. So that was a lot of words, forgive me, but I wanted to fill you in. And unless somebody else on the board has something to say, we're, we will hear what you have to say.
Just to recap, in addition to all that Nicole said, just to remind you of the way it's currently written, you can use any leaf blower you want, gas, electric, or whatever, up until May 15. So spring cleanup, et cetera, no controls. And from May 15 to October 1, gas-powered leaf blowers would be restricted, but electric leaf blowers would not be. And October 1 until the following May 15, again, leaf season, cleanup, all that sort of stuff, any blower you want. So essentially, the limitation here is on gas-powered leaf blowers between the months of, between the dates of May 15 and October 1. Anybody want to add anything to that before we ask for folks to comment? All right. Welcome anybody in the room to come to the podium if they have comments to make. Just give us your name and address, if you would, for starters. And after we've made our way through, anybody who's here and would like to speak, I will invite folks who are watching on Zoom to offer comments. Welcome.
Steve Crisito, Lisa Place.
Hey, Steve.
How you doing? So I apologize, or first I want to say sorry to my friends and homeowners and opponents of this ban, since I kind of spearheaded this two years ago that I was unable to be here. Last weekend, I was busy. But in a way, it's kind of good because I'd like to correct some, make a few statements, correct some misinformation. Two years ago, when this was started, there was a paper distributed by the Conservation Committee that had a whole bunch of misinformation, innuendos, in some cases, flat-out lies. In particular, a study that leaf blowers were dirtier than an F-150 or a car. You guys agreed to it because you pulled it from your website. Yet I still hear the same fake facts, for lack of a better term, being repeated and repeated even last week. I find that kind of concerning, that we're using not real information. There's certainly concerns about leaf blowers, don't get me wrong. But I don't understand why we need to keep repeating the wrong information. Kind of reminds me of the guy that kept saying, "I won, I won, I won the election." He's said enough times, people believe you. There's a lot of other things that can be done. You have a problem with the pool, you know, you consult, you talk to a consultant. You have a problem with leaf blowers, as a matter of fact, an industry expert reached out to you back in 2020, and I have a copy of the letter in case you have forgotten. Larry Will, offering his thoughts on what could be done with the community, with people, with contractors, offering any assistance. As far as I know, it was never just ignored that we were going to do whatever. I'm glad to see that at least we're not for a flat-out ban in this community. I think that your timeframe, should you pass a law, is not long enough. May 15 is too early for a lot of people. I know, including myself, I was still doing yard cleanup till the end of May, almost just finishing now. That's number one. The other item that I wanted to say was that you're complaining about noise. I know my homeowner-quality leaf blower is clean, quiet one, meets new standards. If I were to go out and buy an electric one, it would actually be noisier the way it's measured than my, my personal one at home. So I don't understand the noise problem. I have plenty of other power equipment that's noisier than the leaf blower. When the contractors come on, it's the lawnmowers that are noisier. Sometimes they're using them simultaneously, you don't hear it. So just eliminating leaf blowers, in my opinion, is not the answer. The fact that you can pick one random power tool and say, "You can't use that, Mr. Homeowner," but you can use everything else, whether it's noisier, dirtier, is beyond comprehension to me. You know, there's alternatives. I can't argue with your noise ordinance for certain hours, saying you can't use any equipment. I have a very hard time arguing with that. But singling out a piece of equipment, for me, the private homeowner, I really have a problem. Let's face reality. I know what everyone's talking about with the noise. I get it, I hear it too. But it's really the contractors. I have a problem with you limiting me as a homeowner to take care of my, you know, my property with what I want and the way that works for me. I'm not an anti-green person. Everybody does their contribution to the environment differently. If you come by my street in the winter, for example, you'll see my neighbor's oil trucks coming three, four times more often than mine. Okay? I burn less fossil fuel all winter. My windows are open with fans all summer. I walk the neighborhood, I see houses, I've never seen a window open all summer. Okay? Everyone does their share to contribute to the problem differently. And I just kind of really resent you telling me, "I have to do it your way, follow your rule to be green and follow your rule to be noisy." I can be a lot noisier than I am with my leaf blower. Personally, I wouldn't use my tools when my neighbors are out with, with friends, relatives, whatever. Maybe I'm the exception, but it's the common neighborly thing to do. So that's my piece. Like I said, I really resent you putting any restrictions on me, a homeowner, for a specific tool. I have a hard time arguing you saying a time of day or weekend. I wouldn't feel right doing that. But that's my piece about leaf blowers for the moment. And I really appreciate if we stop repeating the misinformation that cites an old study on old ancient equipment that was dirty. Okay? It's not the case, so.
Thank you, sir. Let me just make one point that is beneficial for all of us, I think, and that is we're told by council that we do not have the right to make a distinction between a homeowner's use of a tool and a commercial operator's use of a tool. So that is something that came up earlier in, early in this process, and I will also report, obviously, from the comments we've gotten over this long period of time that, you know, one significant piece of the problem is when there are multiple blowers being used at the same time on a property. So, all right. Other speakers?
Yes, my name is Tom Runney, 26, Hope you drive.
Hey, Tom.
I'm sure you all know me. Just, I would like to reiterate what I personally said that was important to me for you to consider of last week, last meeting. Steve brought it up also. It's the timeframe that you've chosen. Most people are complaining about noise during the summer, that the timeframe of this should be, or should be considered to be changed from Memorial Day to Labor Day. That's the summer. It's not the official summer, but that's the summer that most people go by in terms of dates. When you do your own lawns of one person, I mean, I know in my neighborhood, I'm one of two people that do their own lawns. I need as much time to take care of things that I can get, whereas a contractor could come in and do my lawn in 10 minutes. You know, I might take three days, working 10 minutes a day. It really doesn't matter. But the timeframe does. A lot of times, leaves are not down early, and a lot of times, they haven't fallen off the trees till September or later. So I would like you to reconsider the timeframe. I would also like to know is, how do you change the timeframe? Do we have to put up a survey, a referendum or something? Or is it just a random decision by the board to pick what days they think that's appropriate and good? I'm totally against the whole ban, you know that. But at least the way that you have come up with a decision to do it, honestly, it is more reasonable than what other towns have done. And my biggest complaint at this time is timeframe is not correct. And that, does it take, does it take a letter? Does it take a, what does it take for you to reconsider, other than just your decision, what the good dates are?
I don't want to speak too much, but just to clarify the rationale behind the timeframe, it's not arbitrary. The rationale is not just for, to have it be the summertime, but to allow for the spring and fall cleanup. And it's also in alignment with what a lot of municipalities have around Westchester. So it's in keeping with the dates that are in place across Westchester. You know, of course, you know, one can always find uses for leaf blowers, but in my experience, the landscape companies have finished the spring cleanup often by the end of March.
But if I may interrupt you, you're right. That's because they had many people doing many things at one time on one property. Whereas when a lonely homeowner like me and the other people in the village, we don't share that luxury. We can't do it that quickly. We need more time. So I know you can't make one rule for the professionals, a one rule for the homeowner. I don't understand why you can't do that. There are a lot of rules like that in this world, you know? But the amount of time that is, that is being done, going by what other communities are doing, I will give you some credit. You are much better with what your decision at this point is than what most other communities have done. In my opinion, if I was an attorney in some of these other communities, I would be trying to sue the village or the town in some communities because it is so discriminatory between has and have-nots in some of these communities that I'm really hoping that Pleasantville is not following these guidelines of other communities that have gotten away with things that are discriminatory. And I still feel, and I did use the word discrimination against homeowners who do their own lawns because, let's face it, I'm not a young kid anymore. For me to use hand tools in a race, you want, you want me to use the ambulance more, I'll be calling them. It's why I need, it's why, you know, I need the power tool. I mean, nobody in my block has ever complained about noise, the use of tools, or whatever. Nobody. If you need a statement, I can get a written statement to that. So I don't know who all the people are that are complaining, where they are, what they're living or what their game is. I don't know. The only thing I'm hoping that you will consider and change is the timeframe upon which you're doing it. It's not long enough for the individual homeowner. And with that.
Could I just ask one question, and that is, and I've had this conversation with some other homeowners. Do you think, obviously, it would require an investment to buy it, but do you think an electric blower in those summer months would, would be adequate for your needs?
I'm going to tell you the honest truth. I use an electric leaf blower right now for most, for most, except when all my maple leaves come down at once, which sometimes are not in your timeframe. I use an electric leaf blower. I have an electric weed whacker. Not because somebody told me to use it, not because I'm a tree hugger and I want to use it. I use it because for me, at that time, in my property, it's easier to use. Now, one of the conservatory, Conservation Committee people said something about the dust and the pollutants that it kicks up, electric, gas-powered leaf blowers. Well, excuse me, are they telling me, or the public, that the, an electric leaf blower doesn't kick up dust and pollutants into the air? I mean, I mean, as someone before me said, the facts that that committee had used are downright wrong. Their facts are of a time long before this time. The equipment about noise and pollution on new power equipment, leaf blowers, lawnmowers, anything that works on fossil fuel, has an EPA rating for noise and pollutants, which, which the EPA sets the standards. Who are we to tell them that? We don't, we don't believe in their standards. It's the EPA. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't want you telling me what to do on my own property. I mean, I'm glad to hear you say that the golf, that the golf course is not going to be given preferential treatment because I don't know why they can keep their golf course in the condition that I keep my front lawn, and I can't do it anymore using their equipment. Even as I told you, and it's the truth, only during, when all the leaves come down on my house. on my house, that's when I pull out my leaf blower. And by the way, it's not a two-cycle leaf blower, it's a four-cycle leaf blower, and it doesn't screw out the oil smoke and smell that some of the older equipment comes out. In the beginning, if I recall, early on, you were talking about two-cycle leaf blowers. And now it's become all gas-powered leaf blowers. Big difference between two-cycle and four-cycle. Now, most of the leaf blowers, the backpacks and all that are two-cycles. Are they loud? Yes. But wait till you hear some of the noise the really powerful electric ones will make. So right now, I, your minds are made up, we know that, you're going to do something, it's probably going to be exactly the way that you presented it. So what I'm at least asking is that you change the dates to a timeframe that is more appropriate for single homeowners taking care of their property without the help of an army of help from one of the lawn people to take care of my property so my property looks as good as the golf course's property. With that, I thank you for your time. I hope you reconsider it. If you need some public opinion as far as the length of what you're doing, then let me know, because other than what you told me, you're following what other communities have done. You personally said last week and before that Pleasantville is Pleasantville. You don't follow other people's rules or guidelines. You make your own. Or, I don't know if I said that correctly, but what you meant is that you research it and you do what's best for Pleasantville, and not because some other town or village did something different. So there's no vote or anything on this, I assume, you're just going to do it. By the way, extending it for a year, that's great, but you're just kicking the can down the road. Nothing's going to change as far as what you said, so.
Well, I mean, the thinking behind that is that it allows folks who would seek to or feel the need to buy an electric leaf blower to trade in or to decommission a gas-powered leaf blower a year to do.
Okay.
Which seems reasonable.
For those people, other than they're being forced to do that, they could go do that right now.
They could.
So...
As did you, I guess, right? You have a...
Yeah, but nobody told me to do it, and this is before you came up with the idea of doing it.
More power to you.
Tom, I hate to tell you, but it sounds like you're already in compliance with the law that we're proposing. I mean, if you use the gas-powered leaf blower to clean up your maple leaves, there's no way that would be...
That's legal.
That's...
But if I want to use my gas-powered blower during those dates to make it easier for me, I mean...
But the maple leaves are not there...
There is no comparison between a gas-powered machine and an electric machine, at least now with the technology that's out there.
But it ends September 30th, Mr. Rooney. So when all the leaves fall in October, gas-powered leaf blowers would be legal under what we're proposing?
Well...
It doesn't affect that at all?
Well, what I'm saying is, your timeframe still needs, I mean, it would be a better adjustment to make it, to make a different frame there. And, you know, I'm just saying, arbitrarily saying the summer months, from the summer months of Memorial Day to Labor Day. Even though my leaves and your leaves, if you have oak trees, they don't fall until December, if you allow them.
And under these rules, you'd be able to use whatever blower you want.
True.
All right, thank you, Tom.
All right.
Much appreciated. Other speakers who are in the room? There being none, is there anybody who is watching via Zoom who would like to offer a comment?
I think...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Hello.
Hey, welcome, welcome back.
Kim, 86 West Cora. First, I do want to thank you all for the amendments that you made, because I think those are very thoughtful additions based on the conversation last week, and I very much appreciate what you all put into that. Obviously, your discussions kind of after the fact, after the meeting, so thank you for that. I do agree with Tom on the timeframe. Right now, mid-May through probably the end of June, the grass is growing like crazy. I mean, inches high every week, and then you get those clumps of grass all over your yard, and it's just a lot easier to clear them off with blowers. So I agree with Tom in the timeframe being Memorial Day or even the first of June. I also, I have both backpack leaf blower gas and I have an electric blower, and I use both. My electric blower, though, I go through three batteries trying to clear off my property, and it takes me probably three or four times as long. So the length of time that I'm generating the noise has gone from maybe 15 or 20 minutes if I'm doing it myself to over an hour. And I go through three batteries, I have to stop and go in and get a new one off the charger. You know, when we first talked about this, there wasn't much of a plan for, you know, kind of rolling this out or phasing it in, and I'm glad to see that you've considered that. We didn't really have a plan for enforcement, I haven't heard that. We don't have a plan for battery disposal, I haven't heard about that. A plan to kind of help those whose livelihoods are impacted by legislation, aside from an exchange program, that's not really a lot of help. And I guess I'm having trouble more with processing why we're regulating this in the first place. You know, to their points back there, these are legal implements, and they're already regulated on some level by the EPA and others, and we already have a local noise ordinance. So if something is truly too loud, you can already call the police, non-emergency number 82, and ask them to swing by. If they're in violation of a noise ordinance, they're already violating a local law. I don't see a reason or a need to legislate something like this. I mean, the fire horns, God knows, we've talked about that for the 18 years I've lived in this village. That certainly exceeds a decibel level. You know, all the cars honking on the street, that exceeds it, and for God's sakes, if you're going to go on this slippery slope, I spent a lot of time, it's one of the sailors' Little League games this weekend, those kids are loud. What if those residents on Clark Street start calling?
We're going to require electric kids in the future.
You know, I'm just saying, if you're going to start regulating things based on noise, where do we...
There actually isn't a decibel level in our code, which I'm just pointing that out there. There are in some town codes. But of course, you know, you'd need somebody to walk around with a decibel meter.
You know, I'm just saying, too, like, and I remember last week, you mentioned that there were about 100 emails in, you know, a couple of years or so, complaints. I'm not sure the exact number of residents in town, but it's got to be close to 10,000 at this point. So that's about 1% of population.
7,500 is the latest number.
Over two years, during COVID, when everyone was working from home and the schools were shut down. So people were, I was certainly sensitive to it myself. I mean, it did get loud from time to time, but I 100% do not buy from anyone that it's incessant, constant, day in and day out, because you're really only impacted by the area around your home. Say there's four or five houses down the street in either direction, maybe a couple behind you. You know, I've been paying attention, and I use laundry now, like I said last week, because my husband got Lyme disease taking care of our lawn, so we just hire someone because it's faster and easier for us. They spend eight to 12 minutes on my lawn. They have one guy come in on a mower to each house, one guy follows him with a string trimmer, and one guy with a backpack blower comes along after him. The total time anyone is on my property is eight to 12 minutes. They are on my street less than an hour and a half and take care of, I believe, it's eight homes on our street. If each of us as homeowners grabbed our electric blowers, we'd each be out there an hour or more with our electric blowers maintaining our properties. I fail to see where there's any gain here, and the electric blowers, to Tom's point, are loud. I just don't even understand why we're regulating this really at all.
Is there much...
Go ahead, Mike. I'm curious to hear your thoughts on what you think everyone else is complaining about. Like, if you don't experience it...
No, I guess there's...
I'm just wondering, if you don't experience that as a problem, and approximately half of the people that have written or come in do, what do you think that the problem is that they're experiencing, or do you think...
My guess is that it's when a company, whoever that is, comes in with multiple backpack blowers, lawn mowers are running sound continuously. So what I would have suggested is taking those emails, figuring out where those addresses were, looking for any commonality. Is it in certain areas of town where we're having a bigger problem? Who are the contractors there? Who's causing the problems? Is it homeowners? Are they using old equipment? Are the contractors licensed? Should we be running them out of town because they aren't even licensed to begin with? Is their equipment too old now, and it does not meet EPA standards? We should have investigated that, that there was no research there. We just said, well, we got some complaints from some people, so let's...
That's a little tough, there's been a lot of work...
Several years of research.
I'm sure there is. In my opinion, I think something that should be regulated.
I'm the guy that's, I'm the guy that signed up to get the calls, and so I'm not complaining.
For 14 years.
I'm not complaining, but I will say, I'm quite sure you're right that there's some unregulated, unlicensed, whatever, who knows what these folks are doing. I've had plenty of conversations over years with some of our local lawn contractors about this very issue, and obviously, everyone's got a point of view, and I'm respectful of all of that. You know, as I said the last time, we've gotten a bunch of emails that said, as you sort of implied, you know, why are we even doing this? Well, we're doing this because there are a whole lot of people that are, that feel they're harmed by it, and then a whole lot of people that feel, they feel like the advantage is that way, the disadvantage is. There you have it. That's the devil's bargain, where, you know, we're trying to represent our entire community, and there are legitimate, reasonable arguments on both sides. I can speak for myself, which is to say, the last thing I want to do is tell anyone how to run their life, except when the way they run their life starts to create a problem with somebody else, and then inevitably, the five of us end up in the middle of it and we get the phone call. So that's where we are.
No, I appreciate that.
Right. No, I get that. So, I understand. I know you do. I don't doubt that in any way. But what I will say is, you know, through a process that's gone on for years, I mean, this conversation has literally been going on for years, ebbing and flowing, and I think you're quite right that it gained new momentum with so many people at home, kids at home during Zoom schooling.
I was doing Zoom myself.
Yeah, but also people working at home, and it would appear likely that the capacity for folks to work at least some days from home is going to continue. So, you know, it's a blessing and a curse, which is to say, there are a whole lot of people who are engaged with the life of their community in ways that they weren't before, because they were off at work all day, and now their work is often at home, and that has both made them more appreciative of the virtues of this place, but also has caused them to think, hold it, you know, I didn't realize this was going on, so.
Right. But I mean, I would encourage looking at other alternatives, because from what I've observed, it seems like people complain, and I do appreciate that you want to, what did you say last week, that if nobody's happy, then it was a win?
The story of our lives, right?
I was going to...
That's, we got elected to make no one happy.
Right, exactly. That's compromise. But I don't know what alternatives to a ban were explored. So for example, what I was talking about earlier, if we looked at the addresses and looked if there were areas, maybe there aren't, maybe I'm just wrong about that, I don't know, but I don't think anyone knows because I don't think it happened. But if we look to see if there were areas of, you know, the town, the village, where people were more sensitive to it, what's going on in those areas? Are they more elderly? Do they have young children? Do they have, you know, are more people home? I don't know. Or are there contractors that aren't licensed and aren't using proper equipment? I mean, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, so, I mean...
But then the other thing, too, is maybe instead of just banning them, maybe we look at limiting the number of them that could be used, you know, so you're not having four backpack blowers and two lawnmowers on one street going at one time, because that is disruptive. You know, I've lived in kind of a construction zone on West Cora for about six years. We've had two brand-new houses built, a third one's getting built. My next-door neighbor did a pulled-out renovation, and I sat there while steel sawed and cutting through bricks for four days. Like, it's been six years of construction on my street.
Right.
And I don't get relief from that. But when I want to just blow some leaves off for 10 minutes, 15 minutes on my own property with my own personal equipment that is evil, and up today, now you're telling me in certain times I'm not going to be allowed to do that, and I just don't see why we need to legislate that. You know, when my neighbor, he's a younger police officer, he works a night shift, I know he's sleeping, I don't let my kids play in the backyard because his bedroom window's back there. You just do things because you're respectful, because you're a good neighbor and a good friend. I don't think, you know, if someone's really having trouble with the amount of noise, then let's reduce the noise. Let's maybe reduce the number of machines that are running. If it's during a time that someone's particularly sensitive, alter the time, like as an individual...
If everybody was as respectful as you report, we might not be here having this conversation. That partly comes from folks who aren't as respectful as I wish they would be, but it also comes from folks who, you know, see the world as they see it and are not trying to be disrespectful, but just have a disagreement about how things should work. So that's what we're trying to navigate. But I do want to say that, you know, what we're essentially saying here is that for most of the year, you can use any blower you want, including what we thought we identified as the months when there was heavier cleanup to do, spring and certainly in the leaves.
Those are the heavier months, for sure. But I'm just saying, like, right now, this is like grass-growing season like crazy, and when our mowers come through, there's clumps of grass and stuff everywhere, and if they aren't blowing it off, all my kids and my dogs strap it in, and the neighbors get strapped it in, and then I'm spending all that time just cleaning up after the guys who clean yards.
But does that feel like the kind of cleanup in, you know, June, July, August, that a commercial-grade electric blower would be up to, since it's not, you know, pushing great power?
Well, just because they'll come in with their blower and blow the grass and things and all that off is helpful to me.
I understand, I do understand.
Again, I don't know, I'm not the landscaper, I'm not the expert, but right now, my grass is certainly growing very quickly, and I expect everyone's doing. I don't know when that falls off, if it's into June, if it's when that season ends, I'm not the expert on that again, but I think the timeframe, it shouldn't be May 15th. I think it should be moved out even to June 1st, or Tom's suggestion, at least Memorial Day is helpful. Anyway, I don't want to belabor all this, but I just, I guess I question sort of how we looked at alternatives to a ban, and how we looked at what was causing the complaints.
The short answer to that is yes.
So you know the addresses of all emails, and you know whether the contractors are licensed and all of that?
Well, I don't know the minutia, but I do know that there are complaints from all across Pleasantville, and, you know, there are individual factors that may make somebody more sensitive. I think one has to do with what their immediate neighbors are doing, right? I've seen that. I've seen, like, some neighborhoods are pretty calm, right? Because mostly homeowners are managing their own properties, and they're doing it in a way that's not overwhelming. Some neighborhoods, like, it can be completely deafening. And then there are, what we hear from the emails, too, is that there are individual reasons. You know, there are, you know, people have written to us who have autistic children, for instance, who are particularly sensitive to noise. You know, we've heard from people who are recovering from illnesses, or people who have worked from home, and there, of course, we talk about the pandemic, but there were people who worked from home prior to the pandemic and who are continuing to do so, too. So, yeah, it is something that affects people unevenly. There's no doubt about that. And so, you know, but I think that your point about neighborliness is well-taken. I think that in some ways, what we're hearing is a kind of neighborly issue, but on the scale of the village as a whole, in a way. And I know, and I've heard this from other people, too, like, it can be pretty awkward to say to your neighbor, hey, I really hate it when your landscape company comes through, right? Like, I'm not going to say that to my neighbors.
But I had my neighbor, he was parking directly, so I'm here and he's here. He was pulling his car in the driveway and parking directly behind my driveway, and it happened three or four or five times, and I just couldn't back out of my driveway because the car was right there.
Yeah.
So finally, I just said, would you mind just pulling the car down a little bit further on the street so it's easier for me to back my car out? Sure, no problem. And it is remained that way. I just think at some point, you don't need a law.
Could you hire a different landscaper?
No.
I don't know.
No. You know, I think at some point, you don't need a law. I think at some point, whether, you don't really have a right to be comfortable all the time. I think if you want something to change, you have to speak up and ask for that change. And people should be considered, they should be neighborly. We live in a really wonderful village, but I don't think it takes a law to do that.
If, I really appreciate these comments, and this is really helpful. When we're talking about why now and why this is happening, it is happening because the increase in volume of landscape equipment got to a point that started to break people.
Yeah.
It's the question, it's the classic question of when does a difference of degree become a difference of kind, right? How many operative industrial-grade machines on your block is too many where you start, where you feel like you want to call the police or call the mayor, right? And a lot, enough people... And enough people in our village feel that we hit that point now, where it's not just one machine, it's a walk-behind blower called a hurricane. And there's two backpacks on the other side of the property, and there's the mower. And they're there, they're not there 10 minutes. I mean, maybe sometimes, sometimes they are. But sometimes they're there 45 minutes, sometimes they're there over an hour. And it gets to a point where people made our phones ring, and they made the emails light up. And so we're trying to be responsive in a compromised way to that changed reality.
Right.
For some neighbors in some neighborhoods who didn't have recourse. They couldn't go to that landscaper and say, stop doing this, because that person had a nine-month contract with their neighbor, you know, for hundreds of dollars a month.
But I mean, there's a sample on our street, like I said, at least eight houses, they're there an hour and a half, and it's every Monday morning. And I know that, and I complain for that.
And other people in town have different experiences.
Right, correct.
And that they've found to be.
My earlier point, why have we not looked at alternatives before we just legislate? Like reducing the numbers of backpacks or reducing the amount of equipment that can be used at any one point in time in a neighborhood?
We did explore that idea.
We have.
Because it came up last week, and Peter was surprised by that.
It was in the survey. It's become up in the works.
It's also about the simplicity of enforcement, enforcement which will already be challenging. And one other thing, just about the noise ordinance question, because it's a question I had coming into this as well. Why do we need a new law? We already have a noise law. And one of the reasons is that most of our noise ordinance complaints are about a party, one party that got too loud, right? Or one person's car alarm that won't go off, or something that is a one-time event, you know, and is responded to. But what residents feel like has happened is a cultural shift that is ongoing. It's not a one-time event, it's not a noise ordinance complaint, where they would call each time it happens, because it's happening, it's contractual. There's a contract that's creating the noise in many of these cases. So it's, I just want to empathize, because my first instinct was, why a law? When we already have a noise ordinance and...
And he has leaf issues, too.
I have a lot of trees, and I own a gas-powered leaf blower that I traded in last month, right? So I pushed...
Still money available.
I guess, I mean, we didn't, it wasn't like a huge arguments, but I pushed about the fall and just saying, you know, I will vote for anything about the fall, I said, personally, because it's overwhelming. And I need power for the fall.
Well, yeah, I mean, I have a gas-powered one, and I have an electric one. And the electric one does take me three times as long. So now I'm just, I'm doing it myself. The gas one is consistent, it blows everything, it's much more powerful, it's much faster. I'm running it to change the battery on the electric one, three batteries to do mine. I have 0.13 acres, very small property, and it takes a lot to get it all cleared out, because we also have a lot of trees. So now we're dragging out the problem three to four times as long.
Well, but we're focused on the summer when there are leaves, right?
Correct.
And so that's where I started, or where we started, with the fact that this is a compromise that has changed a number of times over the last couple of years to get to...
And as I open with, and I want to let anyone else who wants to speak, speak, but I do appreciate the thought that you obviously took from the comments last week and what I assume you got online, because you addressed some of my concerns before I even came to the microphone. So I do very much appreciate that, and I do feel like you listened and heard some of the complaints that people voiced. So I do appreciate that. But I would agree with Tom that the timeframe should be for spring, because that still deals with a lot of grass, the clipping, and leaves coming down in storms and things like that. And it'd be a lot more useful to me to see it faster than Tom.
Thank you, Tim. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom Rollman from 170. Thanks for giving everyone a second chance. And I really, I've been listening very carefully to some of the remarks, man. There's a lot of good points, and both on your side as well as some of the people here. I think one thing I hear, one of the trends is people say, I've never heard a complaint. Or people say, if they have a complaint, they can go talk to them. No one wants to complain directly to a person who's maybe agitating them. People would rather just wait for it to be over. They might be agitated, they might be concerned, they might tell their friends, whether they're at the party or stuff. But no one's going to go up to the contractor with five workers out there. And it's typically the contractors who have an army of people. No one's going to go over there. I mean, you'd have to be really boiling mad to go encounter a worker out there and tell him what you're really thinking, that I wish you guys would go away. And somebody would have to really be, you know, so I don't think you're going to have people on the street confronting people. So I'm not surprised that a lot of people report, I've heard no complaints. That's normal, I think. And also the neighbors, because people know, if they make a comment to their neighbor, they're not just careful about it, the neighbor's going to say, you know what this person said to me? Yeah, so even with neighbors, people really don't feel like they're in general. And when it does happen, you know, there might be a problem out there. The other thing is, I think one of the comments I was hearing, and forgive me, I don't know all your names, I don't want to point, but the comment that you're making that is evolving this day. It has. It used to be just a few people had a contract to come on their property. Now, and I see the evolution in 25 years I've been here. First, there was one, then there was a second one, then there was a third one. Everybody wants perfection on their lawn. Everybody doesn't want a blade of grass. They're doing the streets, I mean, if a blade of grass is out in the street, there's two guys out there with these backpacks blowing around. And we're all saying this, are these people nuts? What are they accomplishing, apart from annoying their neighbors? Now, I'm not sensitive to dust, but I know plenty of people who are. My daughter, when she lived here, she was, my wife is, who does still live here, I've heard plenty about the people. Me, it's the noise. Everyone's got their own thing. But the thing is, that's not sensitivity, and in general, that's not the homeowners. I don't see homeowners out in the street, maybe just one time they have a big pile in the fall, fine. But we're talking about every single week. We see a team of people at random times, you know, at 8 o'clock on a Monday morning, you're probably going to start hearing this stuff, saying, here comes the week, we're here now. But at other random times, you say, you back in the yard, everything's fine, then all of a sudden, maybe it's the next block over, that sound carries. I'm sorry, it's not just two or three homes. It goes quite a distance, depending on exactly where you are, what else is going on. It's persistent. There are other noises, but the persistence of these things is what's really troubling to a lot of people. There's a lot of other sounds, noise code, attempts to attack things, but we all know, it's very hard to enforce. At least this is a minimal attempt to have some period of time, as inconsistent as it may seem to some people, it's a very minimalistic approach to reduce the amount of aggravation for the public. And that aggravation is there, whether it's voiced or not. So at least it's an attempt, after so many years, to do something about the issue, rather than nothing. Myself, I don't like the fact that it's been put off a year, but I completely understand why, because you feel yourselves are, everybody says, who are you to tell me what to do with my property? But excuse me, there's a thousand and one laws already about what to do with your property, what to do with your car, what to do with your dog license, your marriage license, et cetera. That's part of life in the world, whether people like it politically or not. Yes, this is one more, but it's the minimalistic thing, trying to balance what the public is saying they're going through versus people's rights to pick up every blade of grass. However obnoxious that is to them, it's equally, if not more, obnoxious to the people who find that, look, you're taking a baseball bat to hit a mosquito. I mean, what is this? You know, what kind of perfection are we trying to achieve? I think at last being someone said, this is not Scorsdale, or Rolf Harderby, you know, the Hoyleful lawyer, whatever these special words, you know, like, we're living in nature. Deal with nature. You don't have to eradicate every last element of organic matter. You know, so it just doesn't make sense to that extent. I think we should go far beyond. That's my personal belief. Am I satisfied with this law? I would go more. But I think it's good to make a start, and I know people are frightened about this idea, start saying he wants to do more, but at least have a compromise, at how many years, to do the minimal thing that you're setting out to do? I'm glad that you're giving up on the golf course exemption. I think that really was hypocritical or discriminatory, as, you know, some of the people are saying. I think that they're right. School, I don't know. I don't know what their issues are, you know, what they have in the field. But, you know, I think the time for action has been long past. And I appreciate that you've given lots of due consideration, and that's what a lot of people say. Plenty has been, definitely, that you really have given voice. How many times has been some kind of hearing? Maybe not every single fact was correct from the past, because facts do evolve as the technology changes. And maybe not every person's up to date. But the real thing is, it's an aggravation to the public, and it's good that some attempt, some attempt is being made to give some balance, because it's right now is out of balance. Ever more people are having commercial services, industrial technology brought to the peaceable residential ambulances. I find that objectionable. If I want to be in a factory, I'll go live in a factory and put my mattress there. But no, I decided to live in a suburb, in a residential area, not where the factory is. Why are we committing to bring factories to where we live unnecessarily? That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Anybody else here in the room, before I go to the Zoom callers?
I did think of Tom Rooney, 26 Hillview Drive. That brought up one more thought in my mind. As far as people complaining about what's going on in a neighborhood, I'm going to use my neighborhood, and I'm going to use all of Washington Avenue from Grand View all the way down to Hillview, and all the way up Lisa and Gregory, it's a big neighborhood. I can tell you, unless you can tell me I'm wrong, that nobody has complained about noise for several reasons in those neighborhoods. They all have contractors. So if they all have contractors, and if they're complaining about noise, why don't they tell their contractors, don't make the noise? Why do you need to have a rule to tell somebody not to do something? There was a man of last year, or a long time ago, he lived in the condos in Foxwood, and he was saying the village should do something about the noise. They come through Foxwood and make all this. And I made the point out for him, I said, you don't need the village, you go tell them. You're paying that company. Tell them you don't want them to use that equipment. Now, nobody in my neighborhood, to my knowledge, and I know everybody there, has made any form of complaint. So I'm asking you, is there a list, a public list of those complaints that you've got that we as homeowners can see? I mean, if there are no complaints in my neighborhood, then why do you have to attack our neighborhood? If there's complaints in a neighborhood in the old village or anywhere else in town, deal with it. But if there are no complaints coming from an immediate location, why are you looking for trouble that doesn't exist? And that was my point. And is there an answer to the question, can a homeowner such as myself, a resident of this town for 71 years, see the list of people who are complaining about the noise? Because if one of those people were in my neighborhood, the first thing I would do is, I don't sit still, I open my mouth. If I'm having a problem with a neighbor, I'll go knock on the door and say, hey, I don't like what you're doing. Can we change? And that's what one should do if they want change to happen. So is there a list that the public can see, that the board has received?
So I don't believe we have taken all the comments we've received in all the discussions that have ever happened and put them into an Excel sheet or something. When folks send us an email, it is a public record. That email is shared with all of us, and you have the right to see those if you want. And we certainly wouldn't attempt to deny you that. Do I think that it helps any of us make a better community if folks end up with somebody knocking on their door and saying, I read that you wrote this email to the mayor and said this? You're entitled to do it. I don't recommend it.
That honestly is not my point. My point is, if I saw the list, I think I could tell you with that that there's no one in that area that I'm describing that has put in a complaint.
And maybe that's true, but it's hard to see that we could have some sort of a regulation that only applies in certain neighborhoods.
What's the area you're describing again, on Washington Avenue?
He lives up on Hillview.
Well, I live on Hillview, and I backed up on Washington Avenue.
Right. Because, I mean, I can think of people I know that live roughly in that area, that...
Do they have landscapers?
Whatever.
No, but I'm just saying, I think there are people from all over Pleasantville.
Well, I don't want to say I think, I want to know.
So we also had a survey of the town. The survey of the town, everyone had to provide their address. We had 750 respondents or something like that. That's a lot of people. So statistically, it's virtually impossible that there's no one in your neighborhood that was, again, you know, that had a problem with leaf blower noise.
Well, the only people, the only people that I know in my neighborhood that do their own laws are two people. Everybody else has a landscaper.
Right.
So if they had a problem, why would they complain to you that there's noise, when they would go to their landscaping?
You might very well be right, but, you know, what's the bottom line? There are plenty of people concerned about it on both sides. You've seen that standing in this room for the many times we've discussed this. So could it be that it's concentrated more in one place than another, or one company than other? It could be, but it's not reasonable to suggest that we would have some regulation that applies only in certain neighborhoods, is it?
No more reasonable than you making the law to begin with.
Well, I would respectfully disagree with you, but...
I understand that.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else in the room would like to say something? Is there anyone among our Zoom attendees who would like to say something? If so, click on the raised hand. And Chris Larkin. Can you hear us, Chris?
I can.
We can hear you, too, yes.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate it. You know, obviously, hopefully you all reviewed the email that I had sent rather lengthy, I apologize.
No, that's fine, and I owe you a call. We will get together. Just crazy week in the head.
Yeah, no problem. I really just can't agree more with the three people.
Could I stop for a minute? I realize Alyssa pointed out to me, we need, we know who you are, but we need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chris Larkin, 29 Grandview Avenue.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you.
Okay. So obviously, you all got my email rather lengthy. I really just want to speak up and say, I cannot agree more with the three individuals that spoke first. All of the points in my email were reiterated by multiple people. You know, I think one of the things that we're talking about is the noise. And I totally understand that. I'm a homeowner who does my own property. I have one acre of land. I'm probably an anomaly in Pleasantville to have an acre. I have a lot of pine trees. Pine trees shed all year round. I have pine needles all throughout my house. When it rains, they stick to patios, they stick to driveways, they stick to all kinds of different things. I need a gas-powered equipment for the summer. You know, the only thing I don't agree with from the first three people is, you know, that, I hear the need to have something, but I'm not sure that that is the correct one. A hurricane is a different story, okay? It's being used either in the spring, or it's being used in the fall. I highly doubt that any contractor is using that in the summer months. And I agree, it's noisy, it's annoying, but it's probably a necessity, unfortunately, and it's a limited-use situation. If people have a problem with the noise, then they should call the police department, and the police department should then go and see what the situation is. Similar to, admittedly, I had a complaint because I was using a leaf blower, okay? Admittedly. So, that complaint, I don't know who it was, I don't care who it was, but the complaint came in at noon on a Sunday, as I was cleaning off my roof and cleaning off my property, and a cop showed up at my house to tell me I couldn't use my leaf blower. Some of you may be aware of that situation, that happened last year. I had to look into the noise ordinance laws, because they were telling me that I was not able to use my gas-powered equipment on a Sunday. That is just not the case. And I've said it in my email, it's a poorly-written noise ordinance. So my concern is that some of the people that are complaining, that being one of them, is a complaint that's being counted, frankly, that shouldn't be. 12 o'clock on a Sunday, I have always been... I have always been respectful of my neighbors. I operate my equipment long after the start at 8:00 or 9:00 a.m. on the weekend. I just end it well before 7:00. The only thing here that I would agree with in the proposed changes that you've then, you know, set forward is the 5:00 o'clock on a weekend. I don't think anybody has, I'm totally fine with that. But otherwise, I just don't see how you have the right, frankly, to limit the, a gas blower from a, a homeowner. You know, 100 complaints over what, a 10-year period? That's like 10 per year. That is not, I don't believe that is a good cross-section of a community. You know, 750 surveys, that's 7,500 residents? And that's 50/50? Even if it is 50/50, and I doubt that it is, that's 10% of people that responded to a survey. Again, I'm not sure that's a reason to change a law. You know, and honestly, my, my, my biggest gripe is that like, it's almost like the decision has already been made and we're kind of just going through the pales. That's how I feel. I could be wrong, but others have said it as well.
Could I, could I just respond to that one point there? And, and folks have said, oh, they clearly have already made up their minds. I mean, first off, I, I hope it's evident that some changes have been proposed specifically in response to comments in the public hearing. But when a law is proposed for a public hearing, it's because we've gone through a long, extensive process that not-for-nothing included many, many, many nights in this room with lots of people saying, offering their opinion. But it's because we, we are proposing that law. We had a lot of meetings when nothing was proposed. A lot of meetings when our Conservation Advisory Committee had proposed a law and we said, hey, this is what they're proposing. What do people think? There were all kinds of meetings like that. But when we get to a public hearing, it's because we've sifted through that and have proposed something. Doesn't mean it's locked in stone. And I think that point is evident in the conversation we've had tonight. But it, it is because we've proposed something. So I just want to make that clear about what the public hearing is. Did you have a thought, Michael? Were you gonna?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, first I want to empathize with you as a, as a high acreage homeowner. I'm nowhere near one acre, but, but it is a very big difference. And there were certainly discussions about, about that a couple of years ago when these things came up about, you know, the, the different burden based on acreage and tree volume. I suppose the thing that I, I want to respond to at the end of your comment, which is, is an echo of what some people said earlier, is the criticism that the board is not listening and that the die is already cast and that it's all been decided. And it, it just, that, that's, that's difficult for us to hear because there has been a lot of change in this very, on this very issue. And even on the law in the last 24 hours, based on response to what people have said. The law, the law looks very different and very minimal, honestly, compared to what it might have been from the beginning and what other communities have. And so I guess I just want to assure you and assure others who are in the room and on Zoom that absolutely criticisms of, of what was originally proposed have been incorporated and changed leading up to today. So, yeah, thank you.
All right. Did you have anything further to add, Chris?
No, I mean, I do appreciate, you know, what you said, you know? I mean, being on two weeks ago and being on today, you know, obviously you toned it down a bit more. And again, like I said, I have no problem with the timeframes on the weekends. I don't know that anybody has any business doing, blowing their patios after 5:00 o'clock on a weekend, so we should be able to enjoy some part of the weekend. I totally understand that. And I, and I, you know, I just really urge the board to reconsider this decision because as I said in my email, I do believe it is a slippery, slippery slope.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated.
Thanks.
All right. Next up in the list, Andrew Reidman. Can you hear us, Andy?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Andrew Reidman, 122 Sarals Lane. Thank you again very much for like how delivered this whole process. So I, I moved to Pleasantville about five years ago. I've lived in cities before I lived here. I've lived in other suburbs in the New York area before I lived here. And, and Pleasantville is the first, well, I love the village of Pleasantville. I've known lots of wonderful people here. And it's also become the first place I've ever considered moving out of because of the noise. And overwhelmingly, the noise that troubles me the most and that detracts most from my quality of life is lawn maintenance equipment and leaf, gas-powered leaf blowers in particular. My understanding is that the current noise ordinance exempts lawn equipment and that leaves homeowners with really few options for getting some restic from what is often for a lot of us a comes-in barrage of noise during, during the week. And, and so where does, where did that leave us? It seems that some sort of ordinance makes sense, something that should be a compromise. I know many folks have brought up, like, we're a close-knit community. We have neighbors. We should talk to our neighbors. And I, I really appreciate that. And I have spoken to some of my neighbors about this and to landscapers. Some have just flat-out ignored me. But where I live, I have at least 50 homes, that's not an exaggeration, that are with indoor earshot of leaf blowers. And it's my responsibility to walk around to all of these 50 homes and engage with all of my neighbors and ask them to reconsider the use of, of leaf blowers. I think it puts neighbors in an awkward situation. And then what do I do if they say no? Then I'm right back where, where I started from. I think what is being proposed is not ideal. I think everybody on both sides of the issue have pointed that out. But it does provide many with at least some relief for just a few months of the year while also allowing homeowners, for the most part, to be able to maintain their properties the, the way that they wish. Maybe with slightly different equipment, but for the time of year that we're talking about, the, the state of the technology now, a lot of the electric leaf blowers, they're putting out over 160 mile an hour air speeds and 600 cubic feet per minute, which in experience that people have spoken to, including different, different landscapers outside of, of our region, it is more than sufficient to deal with, with blade clippings. And so I, I think where we are now, this issue has been around for many years. It's sort of come to a head partially because people are working from home, but also because the issue has escalated. And we're also at a point where the technology provides us with, with a solution that can be, that can be a compromise. And again, this ordinance is not asking people to just not use any leaf blowers, but just for a few months of the year to switch to, to electric in an effort to give some folks in the community a few months of the year where they can enjoy being outside. When I moved here, I spent $20,000. I made an investment in my home to create an outdoor space to have family over, have friends over. And I find myself now for a lot of the summer, before about 6:00 o'clock in the evening, largely being unable to use it because of, of the noise that's almost always there. And when it's not there, there's just so much unpredictability about when it would be there that it's difficult to, to plan. And then just the last point that I wanted to bring up, you know, kind of thinking a lot about some of the points that were made during the last meeting and really like for the past couple of years, just thinking about like the people who own landscaping companies and what does this mean for their business? And equally importantly, what about the people who, who work for them? And, and one of the landscapers brought up a point last week that I thought was really interesting, that they haven't had to raise prices in about 25 years. And, and I think this is of course supernoble. It'd be great if, if most of our expenses have not increased over the past 25 years. But if, if the reason that they were able to avoid raising costs was through extensive use of leaf blowers, then I would argue that it's not that there hasn't been an increase in cost, that cost has just been shifted over to neighbors and in fairness, shifted over to the people who work for these companies that have to use these instruments every day. Maybe they're provided with protective ear equipment, but you're asking people to take care of your lawn to endure what OSHA describes as unhealthy levels of noise for a substantial part of the day and expose themselves to emissions that are known carcinogens because we want our, either because we want our lobster to look a certain way or because we don't want to pay more to use electric blowers or, or some, some other method. So I think as part of this, we should be considering, yeah, our neighbors, our community, but also like thinking about the people that are maintaining our, our property. And the only way their workplace conditions are going to get better is if either communities or the, their customers are going to, are going to demand it. And oftentimes, these people are probably not in a position where they can speak up and, and express concerns about their long-term hearing or other, other health issues. So anyway, so thank you again for, for taking this up. I know it's not an easy position for you.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Next up, Tom Murphy. Can you hear us, Tom?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, yes. Name and address if you would for the record, even though we've, we already know it.
Sure. Tom Murphy, 52 Orchard Street. First, I just want to thank you for the changes that you're proposing for the law. I appreciate the time and effort that went into thinking about that. There's two questions I want to ask since this is a hot topic, I'll, I'll call it.
That's fair. I'd say.
I can understand both sides of the argument here. But the first question I would ask, what does it take for you to put a law on the ballot to have the community members vote on it? And the second question is relating to adopting a local law. I'm sure the town legal department was involved. And my understanding is they need to, I think it's under local law power. There's three questions they should answer before the law can actually be approved, so to speak, by the legal department. Did that take place as well? Those are my two questions.
So...
Thank you.
The, the first question is that I believe we have the right to take any subject and submit it to a public referendum. We, we don't have the obligation to do so. And I would say it, it is a rarely exercised right in part because there are plenty of issues that aren't purely a matter of one person more than, in a group, creating a majority and, and making it impossible for a minority, even a very big minority, to achieve some of their goals. What we have attempted to do here is, as I think you've heard, find some compromised positions that respect the commentary on all sides, but also respect the fact that an awful lot of people feel that they're harmed by the use of these leaf blowers for whatever their own personal reason is. And, you know, if 51% of people say, I'm not harmed or I'm willing to put up with it because I have a law in service that uses it, there's more to village government and there's more to community life than putting everything up to a majority vote. And on the second question, all of the local laws that we present go back to the village attorney. We don't have a law department, but we use Keenan Bean as our village attorney. And all the local laws that we present go through them and they put them in local law format with the required elements to, to bring back to us.
Thank you. That was it.
Okay. All right. I see no other raised hands in Zoom. No raised hands here in the audience. So Eric, you'll correct me if I am wrong, but the, whatever the version of the local law that we might vote upon needs to be written and presented publicly, available on the website and available to the board members for a minimum of 10 days.
Correct.
So clearly, we've had various conversations. And as Nicole reported at the outset, I think a, a majority opinion on most of those changes to feed into the proposed local law. So can I suggest and argue with me if you see it differently that we adjourn but not close this public hearing tonight to our next meeting, which is June 14, at which point we can continue the hearing, present what is likely to be the final version of the law, perhaps with further tweaks or perhaps not, and then conceivably could vote on it after the closing of that public hearing on the 14th?
13th.
13th. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the one day over. Yeah, June 13. Does that seem like a reasonable way forward?
Yes.
You agree?
Yes.
You're okay, Alyssa? We're not... Okay. All right. Kind of have a motion to adjourn the public hearing but not to close it, to reopen it on Monday, June 13. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you all. Very much appreciate your attention. Now we move on to hopefully somewhat less contentious matters. Call number one, 51, approval of the minutes. Let me share my screen. Okay.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 9, 2022. The minutes are attached to this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 152, Nicole. You always get these for some reason.
Um, resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending in 2022 as listed below. Budget transfers of the general fund, $2,436 from police admin part-time to parking enforcement overtime. $1,500 from snow removal overtime to fire, gas, and diesel. $3,500 from parking enforcement contractual to police vehicle repairs and maintenance. $3,500 from parking enforcement contractual to police gas. $212 from parking enforcement contractual to police uniforms. $3,200 from camp outside service to rec credit card fees. $2,000 from camp outside services to Lake Street Utilities. $100 from camp outside service to preschool rec supplies. $500 from camp outside service to youth rec program supplies. $61.50 from camp outside service to adult rec outside service. $1,000 from camp outside service to shade trees contractual and $75,000 from Panther Club part-time to police overtime. Appropriate fund balance, general fund, $50,000 transferred to capital for Memorial Plaza South project stamped concrete curbing and additional pay station. Increase revenue and expense of the capital fund, $50,000 inter-fund transfer from general fund, the Memorial Plaza Project South.
Is there a second?
Second.
One comment to make in that is that the last piece of that, which refers to the project at the south end of Memorial Plaza, is mostly complete. Jeff and the Public Works team did a fantastic job. Moved the stairs on the gazebo to the other side, created a new little plaza there that will align with the future crosswalk and walkway along the new building at 70 Memorial down to Cooley Street. Cleaned things up. We have new lighting and created angled parking instead of straight in on the, on the street side of the median. Looks great. Comments, questions on 152? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 153, David.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated May 22nd, May 23rd, 2022 for fiscal year ending 22, 22, covering check numbers 103735 to 103867 from the general fund, $147,208.46 from special purpose fund, $1,156.50 from the water fund, $141,445.08 from the capital fund, $46,131.01 from the respite use fund, $8,013.76 for a total of $343,954.81. Payment of claims is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 154, Michael.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the increase of hourly pay rates for school crossing guards to $22 per hour effective June 1, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
It is a... It is a memo, it's a pendant from the police chief indicating that we continue to struggle to maintain a full cadre of school crossing guards and with some regularity need to press police officers or parking enforcement officers into that role. Very much interested in getting more folks to serve in this role, hoping that a modest increase in the hourly rate may help. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 155, Paul.
Result of our trustees hereby authorizes the hourly rates for the 2022 summer season employees, rec assistant and camp counselor, $11 to $15.50, rec assistant camp specialist, $20 to $20.50, rec assistant slash camp directors, $28, $36,050, lifeguards, $1175 to $1525, lifeguards and swim lesson rate, $40 to $60, lifeguard captains and pool directors, $2325 to $3375, rec attendant and pool cashier, $11 to $15.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Eric, just to be clear, this is a range depending on the role people serve and their longevity with us?
Correct, mostly their longevity here.
Right, so those are not, example, in the first case, $11 to $15.50 is not an increase from 11 to 15.50, but the range
Will fall between.
That position will be compensated. Comments, questions?
Are we, is this putting into effect the fact that we have a shortage of?
Yes, and what we did approve this year was an increase in camp counselor hourly rates as well, so that's baked into this.
But are we, we're still having kind of an issue with getting?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, we're probably six off of where we'd like to be camp counselors. So as you probably saw today, we did another round of outreach and Mindy Rogers literally running into people she knows in the grocery store recruiting them to be camp counselors. So she did get one person at Pleasantville Day, by the way.
Can we have a draft? People are conflicted?
Yeah, that's right. Complaint from ShopRider.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 156, Nicole.
All right, resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the annual agreement for New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal, NYMIR, insurance coverage from June 1, 2022 through May 31, 2023, and the contract is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, just want to comment on our relationship with NYMER.
Sure, we obtain our general liability through NYMER. It's a reciprocal insurance company. They've increased rates, they were projecting an increase of upwards of 3%. What it ended up being is a 1% increase over last year, which is well below what the market is bearing right now. So that's a testament to our track record in history with NYMER, and it's a one-year term.
And just to add to that, the reciprocal is essentially an entity that is owned by all of us who are participants in it, and that NYMER specifically represents local municipalities and county governments.
And just an additional comment, our workers' compensation insurance, which is through PERMA, we just concluded the first year of a two-year term, so we don't have that to renew this year.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 157, David.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the appointment of Laura Van der Austin to the Village of Pleasantville Recreation Department. Is a full-time recreation supervisor, job code 0265, CSEA wage schedule B, step five at an annual salary of $71,619 with a start date of June 6, 2022. Set appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is great news, filling a vacant post that we have had for a while.
That's right.
Delighted to welcome Laura to our realm.
And Laura will be managing and running Panther Club.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 158, Michael.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of John Petrone as a part-time bus driver, job code 0204, at the hourly rate of $20 an hour effective July 19, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Welcome, John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 159, back to you, Paul.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation from police officer Officer Sues Mangora effective May 20, 2022. His resignation letter is attached to this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Officer Mangora has elected to go to a bigger department. We appreciate his service, wish him well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 100, Nicole.
Here we go. All right, whereas sealed bids were advertised in the official village newspaper and received on April 12, 2022 for periodic plumbing services, and whereas bids were received as per the following, from Borelli Mechanical, licensed plumber, $138 per hour, journeyman, $138 an hour, apprentice, $95 an hour, rate as consultant, $138 an hour, Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating, licensed plumber, $161 an hour, journeyman, $124 an hour, apprentice, $84 an hour, and rate as a consultant, $161 an hour. Rooter plus plumbing and heating, licensed plumber, $225 an hour, journeyman, $152 an hour, apprentice, $115 an hour, and rate as consultant, $325 an hour. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby awards the bid for periodic plumbing services to, oh my goodness, to Borelli Mechanical for the period of May 24, 2022 to December 31, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Were those rates again?
Painfully, we've had more use for periodic plumbing services than we wish we had. But pleased to see this bid and look forward to working with Borelli Mechanical. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 161, David.
Whereas on March 14, 2022, the village issued a bid request seeking proposals from qualified companies to provide electric repair, installation, and upgrade services for the Village of Pleasantville, bid 2022-2 Electrical, and whereas the bids were open on April 12, 2022 at noon, and whereas the village received proposals from the following companies, PRM Electrical, Inc., and Acorn Electrical Contractors LLC, and whereas Acorn Electrical Contractors LLC provided the lowest bid proposal, however, Acorn Electrical Contractors LLC failed to include the required prevailing rate, wait rate, prevailing wage rate in the hourly rate set forth for its licensed electricians, and failed to calculate overtime pay at the required time and one-half rate, and whereas for the reasons stated here, and the village considers the bid proposal submitted by Acorn Electrical Contractors LLC as non-responsive, now therefore be it resolved, the village board rejects the bid proposal from Acorn Electric Contractors LLC as non-responsive, be it further resolved, the village board accepts the bid proposal and awards the contract for periodic electric repair, installation, and upgrade services for the Village of Pleasantville to PRM Electrical, Inc., and be it further resolved, the village board hereby authorizes and empowers the town administrator to take all actions necessary to implement the purpose of this resolution, bid results are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Minor tweak, just for form, we should say, empowers the village administrator and not the town administrator to take all actions.
I thought you were just sliding it off to the town.
Ah, mover and second are okay with that modest edit?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 162, Michael.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Holy Innocence Parish to close the Topkins Avenue parking lot to public parking on Sunday, June 5, 2022 from 6:15 to 7:15 p.m., and further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Holy Innocence Parish to close the Topkins Avenue parking lot to public parking for the purposes of their ecumenical vacation Bible school on August 8, 2022 through August 12, 2022, from 8 a.m. until 12:30 p.m., and August 11, 2022, from 5:30 p.m. until 8 o'clock p.m., for the purposes of their ecumenical vacation Bible school parrot night.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just to remind folks, Holy Innocence owns the Topkins Avenue parking lot, and the public has use of it at certain times in exchange for the village maintenance of it. So this reflects Holy Innocence making a request to use their own parking lot at hours that are not normally restricted to their use. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 163, Paul.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the promotion of Kristen from Delaware to Senior Office Assistant Automated Systems, job code 751-01, CSEA, B Wage Group 7, step 3 at annual salary of $72,078 effective June 1, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Delighted to see Kristen evolve in her role here with the Village of Pleasantville. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 164, Nicole.
This could be stated where, within, type, or stated below.
No, 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 no. Not everyone's work hour.
Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, location code 40104, hereby establishes the following as standard workdays for its employees and will report days' work to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the timekeeping system or the record of activities maintained and submitted by these members to the clerk of this body. As stated in the record, from the assessor all the way to the water maintenance grade to the number of hours.
Shouldn't the administrator and clerk be something like 12 hours there?
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. That got us to the last of our regular agenda items. Is there any comment from anybody? Let's see if we have, is there any further comment from the public on any subject whatsoever?
I just want to make sure that the amendments to the proposed law on leaf blowers that were clear on there.
Yeah, I'll read off and you let me know. Extended to May 15, 2023, the enactment date.
That would be when the law goes into effect.
Correct, the enactment date. The only exemption would be the school district for their turf maintenance after heavy rainstorms and will work that language.
I think we had the wording already in the previous draft.
We can keep that language. And then we would extend quiet hours to nine to five on weekends and holidays.
And we would remove the exemption for the golf course.
Right, right, I have that.
All right, so we can make those edits, circulate that, and if there's any further commentary, we can go from there. All right, I had a couple of announcements that I should have made at the outset, but I was looking to get to the public hearing. The first was, and I think I'll remind folks of it next meeting because I dare say no one is here to hear it, a big thank you to Mike Newman and to Ben Sarabin, the volunteer coordinator of Pleasantville Day, and to his team of volunteers and all of Mike's crew. PCTV was there all day or most of it. It was a happy moment to have Pleasantville Day revived after two years of hibernation, and I think it was, by most accounts, a really successful day. A hot day, but a sunny day, and folks were just glad to be out, kids had a good time, families had a good time, the food was good. So thank you to Ben Sarabin, who stepped up and took the lead in organizing it, and thank you to Mike Newman and his team for putting on a good show in a week when they already have too much to do with the pool and the parks and the Memorial Day parade. So the other thing I wanted to mention, and I'll mention it again because it goes on for a while, maybe we can also send this out, Eric, via our email list, and that is that the county is relaunching their public engagement about the Westchester County Airport master plan, and this is a matter of concern to Pleasantville because of runway approach routes, and obviously a matter of concern to those who live around the airport for matters of noise, but also pollution and all kinds of stuff. So at any rate, you can find this information at westchestergov.com by searching on On the Horizon, but just a quick report, the first of three sessions is tomorrow at Pace Law School in White Plains, that's Tuesday, tomorrow, May 24 at 6 p.m. There is another one at Manhattanville College in Purchase on Thursday, June 2 at 6 p.m. And then there's the third in the three, which is at Mercy College in Dobbs Ferry, Thursday, June 9 at 6 p.m. So if it's a matter of interest to you to be involved in the county airport and it's a long-term master plan, I recommend you go to westchestergov.com and again, search within the county website on On the Horizon, which is the title of this program, and take a look, because those are all three happening before our next meeting. So, and then just a reminder again, if anyone is still there to listen, please join us a week from today, Monday, May 30, 10 a.m. at BRS, to begin our Memorial Day services, and be there or B Square the following Friday, June 3, 7 p.m. for the annual volunteer fire department parade, one of the great moments in Pleasantville's year or so. Anything else to say on any subject?
Just one quick announcement officially to say that the cell coverage issue, which has come up at a couple of meetings in the past and has been raised by a large Facebook group in Pleasantville, who were called, I think, Pleasantville for Better Cell Coverage. I've continued to meet with their fearless leader, and we've met with some industry experts as well in consulting capacities, and I'll be reporting a little bit more back, maybe at a work session later this summer, there's not a real time crunch on it, but I think there are some positive developments and we think we have some ways forward, so.
Great, thank you for taking the lead on that, Michael. Eric can report, I talk to him generally a few times every single day, and I always do it on my cellphone from my office just down the street on Wheeler Avenue, and recent cell coverage has been pretty sketchy.
Yeah.
It's like it's gotten worse lately.
It has absolutely gotten worse.
It is, and so, yeah, I mean, the folks we're talking to are commending us for being, moving faster than some other municipalities around, and we will be grateful if we do.
Well
Because the capacity needs are increasing at a rate that you can't play catch-up with.
So the commendations all go to you because you've been spearheading this effort.
Well, let's not count our chickens.
We're trying to establish blame if it doesn't work.
If your call doesn't go through and your child can't watch TikTok, it is my fault.
Exactly.
Part of the record.
How dare you?
That might be an argument against.
All right, now it's getting complicated.
I'll just add a tiny thing, which is that I don't think anybody's listening either, but we have one more date at the recycling center where we're going to be taking gas-powered leaf blowers and lawn mowers for those who want to trade in and get a rebate on an electric one, which will be June 4. So not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, so if anybody you know is interested, please tell me.
All right, great, much appreciated. So we will see you again on Monday, June 13. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sub moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all and good night. See you on June 13.